The park.
Okay.
Just parked on the spot.
Because what did the, what did the trailer rule, what did they propose again? That it was for any, any of the spots? Any of the guest spots or what?
No, it said that there wasn't any specific designation of the spot. What it said is that the trailer.
Anyone, okay.
Yeah, but it couldn't take up any, any more than one spot.
So technically these trailers and jet skis could take up every spot, but they're not. Right now it's only two.
Well, we can then designate spots for them.
The way the rule is right now written, it doesn't restrict them to any particular spot. So they could, they could also go in guest, in any guest spot, right? That's there now.
Would they all go by jet skis?
Okay.
We have guest spots, no spot.
They're not guests. What about the guests?
I hear two, first, just a clarification. I heard you say a few times that we have one jet ski and one trailer.
Yes.
Is the jet ski just sitting on the ground?
No, the jet's on.
It's on its own trail.
The jet ski is on a trailer.
Okay, so.
And then there is a separate trailer that houses a motorcycle.
Okay, so we have two trailers and they're just sitting there. This is, we're stor-, the, the people are storing their stuff on our ground.
The owner of the jet ski is in Europe. The owner of the other, other trailers.
So your answer is yes, we are storing these items for the owner. Yes or no?
At home is the one.
Yes, okay. Um, as far as I know, I agree with, with Bob. We should not be storing stuff for unit owners or residents. That's not our position. There should be no storage allowed. Motorcycles or, or jet skis or any con-, or anything on a trailer.
What, what about the people that leave their cars here when they move up back up north into Snowbirds? And they leave their cars here for the entire summer?
That's their car.
Now they bring them over by the, uh, the tennis courts.
But, but, but that's their, that, that's their car. That's their registered vehicle.
Right, but they're, but they're storing them, they're not storing them in that space.
As far as I'm concerned, having a mo-, having a motorcycle in storage, that's not being used. And having a trailer with whatever's on it, that's a storage.
I agree with you on the motorcycle, on the jet ski, because the gentleman is not here. Some of those people that have the motorcycles up there do live here and do use them.
I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the ones, a trailer or whatever's on it.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
If they're not being used routinely, we, we should not be allowing storage at the racetrack.
I, I agree with you.
Makes no sense.
I agree with you.
It's what, I, I have not looked on the side of the not again. If in fact there are seven or eight or nine of them that are just wrapped up in storage, they, we should not be providing storage for residents.
I agree.
Okay, you know, I did a little research on this. We have sixteen vehicles in there being stored for free. So I called, um, Public Storage where I keep my locker and storage for an equivalent parking space, they're ranging from one hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars a month based on availability. And they had nothing available that day. So, we got sixteen vehicles at a hundred dollars a month, sixteen hundred a month times twelve months, nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars a year in storage being given to who? For what? Where's my hundred dollar a month accommodation?
But he doesn't want the eyesore in front of his apartment.
Well, I'm taking another, I'm taking, I understand. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about where's the equity here? We're, and we're subsidizing and doing something we really shouldn't, or else we should collect. But if you're, if you're sitting in a guest spot and you're not a guest, you're just leaving it there? Go get a, a, a five by ten locker like everybody else. We don't do that. These guys have fourteen guest spaces left, but that's seventy-two apartments in that building.
Right, okay.
So we're being abused. We're being abused.
Yeah, um, my, my only concern is that obviously that this was, uh, discussed when the gentleman was here. He was told it's okay and next meeting it's okay again. Uh, he's out of the country, so I, I, I agree with what's been said here, but I think, uh, out of common courtesy and respect, we need to wait till they're back, so they're going to make a special trip. And in fact, that meeting, he made a special trip and he was told it's okay when he was prepared to move it and he came back prepared to move it, but then he was told it was okay. So you see what happened. Uh, so we can't do that to the guy again. I don't think it's just, I don't think it's fair whether it's him or anybody else. If they're, but, but I do agree with what's been said, yes.
Obviously not.
What is the difference between the cars that are parked over here by the tennis court that are covered? That, isn't that a storage area?
Uh, well, that, that's what he was proposing that we allow him to do is to park it there and then to pay a, a certain rent. I don't know what, 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 I can't remember now what he's saying.
But we're allowed, you're allowed to park by the tennis. That's the only place that you can put your car in a guest spot if you're leaving the state for a period of time. Is that correct? So why are these cars not there?
Dan, yeah, I don't, I don't know, Dan, can you address that?
Okay, ever since I became manager here, that area over there has pretty much been designated for the Snowbirds. They want to leave their cars here. Uh, they cover them, some cover them, some don't. Uh, and they basically store them there for the time that they're back up north.
But they're in guest spots, right?
Yes, they're taking up guest spots, yes.
They're not allowed. You're not allowed to do that.
The Bible, uh, section, section eight, paragraph two states that in the event of a parking space or locker not being assigned to the use of any apartment, such as parking spaces may be assigned, used or leased on such terms and conditions that the board may determine.
Where, where does it say?
This is section.
No, no, where, where, where can they be leased? Where, where on the property?
These parking spaces that everybody is in or where we want to put them to, where people want to store their vehicles, the board has the right, allow me to jump here.
Bible is now, right, right now, okay. Uh, parking spaces, do you say? Okay, uh, well, so you're basically saying this is, this would work for any guest lot? It says any, any space is not assigned to an apartment?
Yes.
Okay. Right, okay, well, again, as I said, at that, at that meeting, he was, that's what he was proposing, to pay monthly fee and then the people were like in up in arms, oh, this is, this is an injustice. Why should he pay anything? And now people feel exactly the opposite, so that's what happens.
I appreciate what you're saying. And things have changed since then, you know, because let's face it. Well, we've got a handful of our community here, so nobody really heard this until they got shown to them. So now you have a real consensus where people come and say, wait a minute, wait a minute. We didn't know this, we don't show up. Well, we should, but at the end of the day, end of the day, especially if he's agreeable to pay rent, the least we can do on behalf of the community, right? See right here, this is, this is income for us. And at the very least, we should be compensated for storage if that's what we're doing, or else go get real storage like everybody, like I do or everybody else around here. And that's the point. So I wrote up this section right here at the top to replace the amendment that you wanted to vote on. I mean, it sounds good to me.
So what Kirk is proposing is that we, um, allow them to park by Nottingham, uh, but to pay a hundred dollars a month in storage fees.
Not, not my building, because I don't have anywhere to park anymore.
How about, how about by the tennis courts then? There won't be any, any building.
We can, we'll, we'll move those to the tennis court where they're not in the, wait, no, let me finish. We'll put them over there where there are people's faces, but it's not going to be free. What I'm proposing here is rewriting the, what's before the board today to say, trailers, jet skis and motorcycles may be parked in guest parking area at the tennis courts with written permission from the association office. If it fits in one parking space and the owner pays the association one hundred dollars a month for a storage fee.
Okay, so instead of Nottingham tennis courts, and it would be a hundred dollars a month instead of free.
But for purpose of the people that were, the stores purpose.
For storage, it says, well, for storage purposes, I'm just.
Yeah, if you're storing, if, if it's in a parking, if it's in a guest spot, what does security do? They look and see how long you're there, right? You can't leave it overnight or for a week. If it doesn't move in two days, we, technically we could tell you, so. Huh?
I have a question to you.
What?
I have two questions.
Uh huh.
One in my sport.
Yeah.
The other one is standing in guest.
Yeah.
I'm living now for four, five months.
Uh huh.
So I became a storage.
Yeah.
I need to pay.
Yes.
Okay.
Or you could put it in public storage.
Are, are, are in public storage?
Sure. Public storage, I, I, I'm sure it's, it's all about paying the parking space.
Okay, but how are you gonna, but Kirk, how are you, how are you gonna police that and say, well, this car can be here, but this person just left last month? How do we get, like, how are we gonna know if they, if they left last month or they didn't?
They're not gonna have contract with it. We'll make up, or let play contract. We read a lease of space to you, we need to put a boot tag on there, let them know it's there. So now security knows this car is paying rent, right? If not paying rent, we will contact you.
This is getting really complicated, I think. Uh, we, we, we try, we, we were dealing with just the issue of trailers here and now it's gone to all cars and.
So just, I also, before this happened, when the gentleman was parking by the tennis court, there were residents here complaining that that was an eyesore over there and they didn't want to.
Yeah, I think I remember a couple of those, right?
So it's gonna go back.
So we have, right, exactly, you're never gonna please everybody.
Well, but why do we have to please these sixteen people over, over the majority of members?
Um, right, yeah. Obviously, the consensus of the community has changed drastically. Uh, we can no longer approve thi- this particular rule, uh, based on the outcry and so forth. So what we need to decide is what to do as an alternative. At the time that this gentleman came several months ago and he made his proposal, I don't, I, I think that it made more sense than what we ended up doing, but we were swayed by the loud voices that showed up that day and said, what an incredible injustice it is to ask this guy to pay anything, that's not fair. And one of them is running for the board, I'll, I'll remind people of that.
You need to just tell the guy, like send him a letter and just say that, you know, it's, it's changed here. The rules have changed and, and come November, when you return, you're gonna have to put it in storage. And so he doesn't have to be.
No, I, I think that's, that's exactly what I was gonna propose.
Before he comes back and that.
The board disapproved this, when this was.
Right, okay, so, uh, Dan, we need to change the language, we need to send this out again. Probably in the, the budget proxy mailing, so we can piggyback on that. That would also give them time to return from Europe, uh, and also notify the other person with the, with the jet, with the, sorry, with the motorcycle and the, uh, in the trailer that, uh, we, uh, in, instead of by the Nottingham, this is the tennis courts and it's a hundred dollars a month. I don't know if that's competitive or not. What are, what are private storage, Kirk, in your research, what are private storage facilities charging? So we won't be competitive, nobody's gonna wanna park there.
There you go. Right behind. We shouldn't have storage period.
Right.
We should not be a storage company.
No, I, I understand that, but, but if, if we were more competitive, then there could be an additional source of revenue if that's, if that's a consideration.
It's less than one half of one percent.
Okay.
And if, and, and just looking right at this edge of the tennis court, we have all these cars wrapped up. You were allowing commercial vehicles overnight, it's an eyesore. And, and this is people driving by that, you know, anybody driving to and from the Bavarian is seeing all these stored vehicles and commercial vehicles. And we're allowing it. We're allowing our community to look like crap. And, and again, do you ever see any of this in the French quarter?
No.
Cause this car lives there.
Only here.
Understood, alright, okay.
You guys, you guys are now allowing, you guys are now responsible for allowing eyesores to remain on our property. It's your responsibility to take care of it.
Okay, um, the, the only, the only quibble I would have is maybe with, with the hundred dollars. Uh, because, because if you're, if you're gonna charge, if you're gonna charge exactly what the pri-, the private storage is, is, is charging, then why, why have that option of paying in the first place? You see? You can just say no storage at all, or you can, or you can charge something, but make it slightly competitive. Otherwise, it's like, what, what is, what are you really, what, what are you really trying to achieve? You see what I'm saying? So it's either you ban it entirely, or you charge something that's slightly competitive, like seventy-five.
A hundred dollars is the bottom. Most, most of these sites are going for one fifty, right?
Oh, they are going for higher?
I took the low end.
But some are charging one hundred.
Based on availability of which it doesn't seem to be much. Everybody, I saw, I saw several places.
Everyone is parking and we became a big store, no community.
I understand, yeah.
Temporary until the people comes back, move the, whatever you have there, but you need to check who is the twelve motor sites.
Okay.
We start with.
That, that, that's a whole separate issue. And, and, you know, that's an enforcement issue, Dan, that please, you know, let's follow up on that. But it's a, it's a sep-, separate issue that we need to enforce. This, this trailer issue is a separate issue that we're trying to adjust the language here so that, you know, people are up in arms as they are now. So anyway, I guess I'll, I'll go along with the tennis courts, a hundred dollars.
No, no, no.
You don't just ban it entirely.
We don't, we don't need storage here. If you want a storage, you have no problem, I put it in front of your unit.
No, no, we don't want it there.
No, in front of my house.
We don't want it there.
No, no. If you look in there, I have a junkyard in front of my door.
Okay.
You have to be with you, right?
So basically, all we need to do tonight is just vote no.
Keep it the way it is.
Keep it the way it is, okay. That, we, all we have to do is vote no then.
And then enforce no storage.
That's right.
Get immobile vehicles the hell out of here. Or have the unit owners get out of here.
So what, uh, all I'd propose is to begin enforcement, uh, after the Snowbirds come back in November, to give all these people that were told one thing before, the opportunity to come back and, and correct.
That's right.
Okay, so, um, is there a motion to deny? A motion to, I mean, to disapprove?
Yes.
When I do this in November, what, when I come to the job, where I gonna park it?
Okay, uh.
Where I gonna park?
It seems like, it seems like the consensus is to, to vote no on it. Rabbit, what do you, Rabbit, what, what do you propose?
Guys, please, uh, what do you propose we do on this? Uh, Rabbit?
My wife is parking there.
I already don't want you to go with the storage.
Sir, we're trying to vote on this.
The board is discussing it right now, please. Go ahead.
There's plenty of storage companies out there. I don't think we should move them to a storage business. Uh, and, and I said before, if they're using your motorcycle on a few occasions and it leaves every day, that, that's fine. But if you're gonna store your motorcycle there for the, uh, several months at a time, I, I think it's picking up space and I, and I agree with them that we're storing it. And the same thing with the jet ski, if he comes and uses it, uh, during the winter months, it comes and goes with it, that's fine. But to just leave it there for six months out of the year, it just doesn't seem right to me, you know? And I, and I agree with Ron, like Kirk says, you know, don't want a store.
So Rabbit, what, what?
Don't want a store, because if we do, if we are gonna store, we should get competition for it.
So are you, are you saying to, uh, do the hundred dollars? What, what, I wanna hear from him.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know what's competitive. I think we have to look at some of the storage areas.
I did. Well, Kirk did the research apparently and it's from one hundred, oh.
Hundred, hundred fifty.
Oh, but there was one hundred's a minimum, uh, I'd be pretty with a hundred.
Oh, okay, but, but it's not, you had another point in there is like, when, when it's being used as storage, they should be allowed. Are you saying that when they're here, then they can park it here? The six months or whatever that they're here? I'm, I'm gonna hear.
He says, yeah, then, then how do we have a last? Now they're not storing it anymore than you think it is. If you, if you have plans, he takes his jet ski out every day, he's not storing it anymore. So how are we gonna charge, you know, a hundred dollars?
That, that's the question. How, how do we, I mean, how do we keep track to such an extent that we know, okay, this person who has his jet ski parked right now, they're not in the country or they are in the country? How do we know if they're in the country or not? Maybe he comes once every three months, we don't know. So how do we, how do we track that? If we call it storage, uh, that's just, that just adds an ambiguity to it that makes enforcement almost impossible. How do you know if it's storage or not, just by looking? So when I say, when you say storage, I, I, I think we should just be saying parking. Otherwise, there's no way to enforce it.
Yeah. Yeah, otherwise you're gonna have to pay a hundred bucks a month.
Period, whether it's storage or whether it's parking and you're here, right? Because otherwise, how do we know?
Yeah, yeah, we don't know. We don't know if it's here, if he's using it, if he's taking it out every day, or if he's staying here for the month. And he's storing it, so we'll turn that.
I mean, we can't observe this like twenty-four seven. So, uh, so, so Rabbit, what is, what, what motion do you wanna make? Do you wanna make a motion to just deny the rule change, like just keep things where they are? Or do a rule change where we start charging a hundred dollars a month at the tennis courts?
Yeah, I, I think we should get something, if we're gonna store them, we should get something.
But we shouldn't store anything.
People are, a lot of people in the audience are saying we shouldn't store anything and just like deny this and forget storage.
If there's, if a person has a vehicle they're using to get back and.
You're throwing that jet ski to work every day.
If, if, if the person is using a vehicle, that's fine. But if there's a, if it's a trailer holding anything, that we are not a storage company. There should be no, nothing set aside for storing somebody's trailer.
Or parking it even. Or parking it even.
Or parking it, yes. Or even parking it. If they're huge, if they have a jet ski, fine, store it someplace, park it someplace else. You enjoy, you come home, you live here, you wanna use your jet ski. You go wherever you store it and take it and enjoy it and bring it back to your storage area. Like anybody else. We're not a, we don't provide storage.
Okay, were you able to hear that, uh, Rabbit? Did you hear any of that? Okay, ba-, basically, what a lot of people have been saying is that, uh, they, they don't wanna see this place turn into a storage facility, uh, even at a hundred dollars, because, um, assuming that becomes a competitive rate and most of the storage facilities go up to a hundred and fifty, then everybody would be taking advantage of it and then we'd become. Um, yeah, so. Just deny, so just deny, deny the motion or it's like, uh, disapprove the motion? That would kill the, the rule change to just go back to how it was before. So is that, is that your motion? Uh, with, with the, uh, with the caveat that enforcement would begin in, um, November, which is when, I think when most of the Snowbirds come back. So anyway, um, okay, so, so Rabbit makes that motion. Carl, do you want a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh, to deny the rule change, uh, to disapprove the rule change, but to begin enforcement in November. Uh, Dan, did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay, any, uh, further discussion? Any objection? It's approved.
Don't forget to park the place for him for tomorrow night, so one.
Well, that's a separate issue. Dan, we need to get enforcement on, on the motorcycle thing.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right, so next, what is the next one?
Landscape.
Okay, lan-, landscape, Dan?
Okay, uh, there was an issue with our current landscaping company and, uh, in their contract, they have the right to cancel their contract at any time, and that's exactly what they did. So I went out and got six, I got six proposals to do, uh, our landscaping here. They're all the same, one to the next, you know, it's apples to apples. Different companies, KCO, uh, their charge a month would be four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. Uh, Florida Land would be six thousand dollars. Florida Native would be five thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. Uh, Green Experts would be seven thousand, ninety-two dollars. OC Lawn would be five thousand, two hundred and three dollars. And Universal Land would be four thousand dollars. Universal Lands is the company that does, uh, Enveron. I spoke to the, uh, property manager over there and she said she was very satisfied with them, that they do a very good job, sometimes, uh, takes them a little longer. They're not a very big company, but she says, uh, when she asks them to do something or says something needs special attention, they always get it done. Uh, the other companies, I tried getting, uh, references from them and, uh, just because of other things that were going on in the office, I wasn't able to spend as much time as I would like to. But, uh, I wasn't able to get, uh, speak to anybody on their reference list.
What was the name of the company that you said was good?
Univer.
Universal Lands.
They do environment.
Yeah, they do, uh, Enveron, yeah.
And how do you say Enveron? Enveron? Anyway, um, uh, and how much did you say they were?
One thousand.
Was that the least of the, of the prices?
Uh, yes.
Okay, that was the lowest, all right. So, uh, um, question, yes.
How often?
Once a month.
Once a month? Do they cut hedges and everything too?
Yes, yeah.
Dan, excuse me, can you double check? I thought that was four thousand per cut. Which would add up to a hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year.
Per cut, is that, so it's two cuts a month?
No, it's twenty cuts a year.
Oh, twenty-eight cuts a year?
Yeah.
Not a month?
Hold on.
Yeah, not a month.
Hold on.
And I know Kirk, you were paying four thousand, four twenty-five a month. And that's a pretty good deal, that's about fifty-three thousand a year. And I, I looked at some of the other ones and like, okay, if we're, if we have to pay a hundred and twelve thousand, like that's, that's over double.
I'm gonna read it.
Now, yeah, and I, well, yeah, you could maybe check that. I'm pretty sure it's four thousand per cut, Dan, and.
Yes, it is, four thousand per cut, sorry.
How many cuts? Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, so that's a, that's a.
There are, all these companies do twenty-eight cut, cuts?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So that, that'd be a hundred and twelve thousand. So Dan, let me ask you this. Uh, what, why were we canceled? Like, was there irreconcilable differences or something?
Actually, could you get a mic too? I'm not sure if Rabbit, if they can hear this.
Yeah, what's on his demand?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, yeah.
They were pissed off.
Over one. They got too much money?
Yes, they didn't get enough money because, isn't that the same company that charges sixty thousand dollars?
No, that, that was, that was a mistaken figure.
Right.
Right, but they came back and they said that we still owed them money for the, uh, hurricane cleanup. And I said that we went over this and there's no way that we owe you any more money. And I said, we're not, we're not gonna pay you anything more unless you can prove it. And they said, okay, fine, and they walked out. Next thing I know, I got an email from them saying that they, that they were not coming back, they canceled their contract. So.
Because they already got thirty-five thousand dollars.
So how much were they looking for more?
About another fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so, uh, but, okay, and I'm sure there could have been some negotiating down there because.
No, they didn't wanna hear anything.
Well, okay, but, okay, so do you wanna pay a hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year or negotiate with these guys to give them what they think is fair? Cause obviously there's a problem with communication, like they're, they expected more from us. You didn't wanna pay it.
Well, there's gotta be a reason. Okay, the, the reason was the, uh, in the, uh, contract that we first signed with them, they gave me a price list for doing the, uh, the cleanup.
Right.
They overcharged on every one of their invoices. Every single one of them was way overcharged. Where they, where on their price list, it said it was thirty-five dollars an hour for, uh, the labor.
Right.
They were charging seventy-five dollars an hour. And that's just the one that comes to my mind right away. It was like fifty dollars, uh, a ton for, for, uh, the dumping. They were charging a hundred and fifty dollars a ton for dump, dumping.
Okay, well, that's, that's not fair, right? And I don't know why.
That's why I had to go over everything with them. And when I came up with it and I said, no, we don't owe you any more money.
Is there, is there perhaps a personality clash that, like, maybe I should sit down and talk with them to see if we can make a.
make a reconciliation here, like?
No.
I don't know what, well, what?
Let me, before, Bob, before you-
How would you pay another twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year?
How many, I thought you said we have multiple bits?
And six.
But, but, before, before we go on, I wanna ask you, what kind of a job has, uh, what's the name of the company that we just got rid of?
GRC.
What kind of a job were they?